I'd like to call it a order. The December 6, 2017 Committee of the Hall Council Meeting. I would ask that you rise for an invocation by Mayor Thomas followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Gracious and eternal Father, we thank you for once again convening to conduct the business for this borough in decency and in order. We also thank you for your divine providence and also your predetermined counsel which will never be asserted. We just thank you that you would give the heart and minds to each at this bench and to each in our community that which is purpose for the common good. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Okay. I would like to start this meeting with the Fireman of the Year Award. Chief? I was gonna let you sit down and then make you get up again.
Yeah, I know. You're waiting to sit down. So, we were tasked with nominating a Firefighter of the Year Award. The leadership of the fire department selected a name and the officers voted. The Firefighter of the Year that we did select is Michael Sudlock. Mike, if you're here, come on up. A little bit about Mike. Mike's been a member of the Pottstown Fire Department since 1969 where he started as a young volunteer. During his tenure as a volunteer, he's held numerous leadership roles including deputy chief at the, what, at the, which company was that?
North End.
North End. Sorry. He started here before I was born, so. So, in 1988, Mike was hired as a career firefighter at the North End Fire Company and over the past 48 years, he has responded to tens of thousands of incidents in the borough serving the citizens here. As a career firefighter, Michael continuously demonstrates that he is still leader by continuously passing his acquired knowledge on to the new firefighters as well as seasoned firefighters. For his continued informal leadership, Michael has been selected by the fire officers of the Pottstown Fire Department as the Firefighter of the Year.
Congratulations, Mike. Number five, Edward E. Hoffman, Employee Retiree, recognition.
Also known as Papa Smurf.
I have here a resolution. Recognizing Edward E. Hoffman for 12 years of dedicated service to the borough of Pottstown. Whereas Edward E. Hoffman has served the borough of Pottstown as a dedicated employee since 2005 and whereas during his career with the borough, he served the community twice by working within the police department as a sworn uniformed police officer and as a civilian processor. And whereas Ed's presence in the police department and in Borough Hall will be truly missed by the people that have worked with him, now therefore be it and it is hereby resolved by the mayor and town council that Edward E. Hoffman is officially recognized for the outstanding service he has provided to the borough of Pottstown through 12 years of employment and further that he has extended best wishes for a happy and well-deserved retirement. Adopted at Pottstown Borough Hall, 108th High Street, the sixth day of December 2017. Congratulations. Okay, number six on our agenda, the Citizens Leadership Academy Graduation Ceremony. Courtney Hye, please.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, our fourth class of the Citizens Leadership Academy graduates after a 10-week course in borough government. So, when I say your name, please come forward. Tamara Charles. Michael Paulus. And then we did have four that attended class and were not able to attend the ceremony tonight. They would be Rob Greps, Deborah Lee, Velva Zarley, and Lisa Vanny. I could have a round of applause for everyone.[491.12][491.12](applause). Thank you. Thank you very much. You're so sweet. Thank you. Thank you very much.[511.12][511.12](applause).
Okay, we'll go to subcommittee reports. Tell us about the infrastructure, Councilor Culp.
We had our meeting on the 16th of November. With our public works, Ken Doc, we installed no parking signs on the Red Hill Road, High Street, Boston Park, Farwell. That was always time I saw. There was all kinds of abandoned cars, parked there and things like that. So, that's been eliminated. The TV camera, the sewers west of Route 100 to look for any kind of abnormalities and they did some work on some of the sewers along there. As for paving, the contractors, I had some questions about this. The contractors reneged. Doug tried several times to contact them and to no avail, they never kind of showed up, so our paving is probably going to be until next year because of the weather. The parks and rec, the pedestrian bridge at Riverfront Park is finished now. There was originally some structural issues. That's been taken care of. The pavilion is finished in Riverfront Park. Nature play area is progressing well in Memorial Park and it's supposed to be planned on being done by the end of November. Is it done now?
You can't hear me.
You can't hear me?
Fifty percent, 50% complete.
It's 50% complete? We had $100,000 grant for Memorial Park's institutional playground from DCED and CFA and there was $1,890 donated to the Veterans Island and Memorial Park when they had the fundraiser there, so. And that's the end of my report.
Very good.
I have a question regarding the contractors that reneged on the deal. So, next time, will they still be eligible for the contract and what was the reason for them not following?
Doug said that he's gonna go after the bond, I guess, right? And I don't know. As far as anything else, I don't know. You haven't heard anything from him?
An institutional playground, does that have anything for handicapped?
Yes, I think, I do believe that's for handicapped children.
That is incorrect. The intention of the project is to create a playground that is accessible and inclusive.
Very good.
Mayor, I think you had a good point about the, you know, if we were to have this contractor bid again, Chuck, how would that impact us legally? Could we deny them?
All of our bid documents make a request. Have you ever defaulted on a contract? Typically, we wouldn't allow anyone to be a qualified bidder if they defaulted. In this case, they would have defaulted and therefore be ineligible to be awarded a future bid.
And with that being said, I know that there's no one up here that approves of some of the road conditions that do exist, although that charge would be laid at our feet. You can see a situation like this means everybody is in a predicament.
Okay. Economic Development and in our business liaison, Assistant Manager Keller.
Good evening, councilors. Yeah, as you've heard, we've been successful in some of our grant applications lately from, as Counselor Culp has mentioned, we did receive $200,000 from DCED for a playground enhancements at Memorial Park that will include ADA, accessible parking and pathway and playground equipment. Shortly after that, we also received word from DCNR that we received another $70,000 for that playground, so that will really help us to make that area around the Spray Park really a very entertaining and attractive space for families and children to gather and spend the day. So, we're up to a total of about, including the Disney grant, of about $335,000 that we've received for that facility. And then just to correct the previous item, the School River Trail Bridge, which that project is being conducted by the School River Heritage Area for the bridge in Riverfront Park, the construction started this week and they're expected to be completed in about two weeks or so. So, the trail in that section will be, will be back open at that time. And also, I've gotten word that the Safe Roots to School Project along Oak Street, which is a PennDOT-funded transportation enhancements project that's been ongoing for some time, is expected to go out to bid in January or February of 2018. That project primarily consists of pavement markings and signage between the school facilities in that, in that area. And lastly, I just wanted to announce that the Bike League of America has recognized the borough of Pottstown with an honorable mention as a bicycle-friendly community. So, with all of the bike improvements that we've been conducting lately, we've been, we're now starting to get the recognition for that. That will hopefully help us to attract residents and businesses to the area. We're not an official designation yet, but we hope to go for a bronze certification next year. They noted that one of the items that was missing from our application was bicycle education for adults. So, we'll actually be looking for a grant to do some bicycle education for adults and children as we roll out the Walk Bike project in 2018. And an update on Walk Bike, they are instructing sidewalks along High Street. Right now, they're, they're pretty much almost complete along High Street and they're starting to move up, up rolling in Jackson Street. They hope to be completed by the end of the year, if not by then, shortly thereafter. Thank you.
Very good.
I have one quick question.
Sure.
The closed-loop system, the corners that they're putting in now, so the color of the concrete used there does not match the surrounding. And I think we had this discussion a couple meetings ago when we were talking about ordinance for replacing side or gas to meet or match the color of the existing sidewalk there or whatever, so.
On one side.
Okay, so, right, on both sides, like if we look at the brick house, there's the corner, it's white, the sidewalk around it is brown, so.
I think it's brown. It'd be well in fine. Remember, when I get a patch replaced in mine, too, it's a much lighter gray than the rest, but UV will hit it and it'll be more uniform as it weathers. I noticed it too, but.
Yeah, also, the ADA curb ramps are not subject to the sidewalk ordinance. They're, that's a PennDOT requirement. So, but I would agree with Counselor Proxel that, you know, that is a plain white cement that they've applied there that will weather and age over time and match the adjacent sidewalks.
If there's nothing more, we'd also like to hear from Peggy Lee Clark about economic development. Welcome.
Good evening, councilors and mayor. I just wanted to update you on the economic development. The community, the business leaders' community, as you are aware, have started an economic development awareness campaign and I wanted to report to you tonight that just in a month's time, there were 15,487 views of the iPic Pottstown videos. We will continue to highlight lots of different businesses and business leaders within the community. Our reach has been close to 30,000 people through that campaign. And one concrete example, I was contacted by an individual who wants to move his business to Pottstown. We met and within three weeks, a lease was sent, was signed. He will be moving his business in January 2018 to the Pottstown Industrial Complex.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Peggy, since the lease was signed, can you tell us what that business is?
I don't think that they have agreed to have it signed or public yet.
I can't hear you.
Anyway, our last transportation meeting had been canceled and we just had one tonight, so we really don't have any notes from that, that meeting, but we'll have notes for maybe next week or January.
Very good. Okay. OBGC, Ricketts.
There is a report in your packet.
Anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Okay.
You know, I just want to, I have one thing. We all know the news about the YMCA closing and I think I've gotten a lot of feedback about, you know, what are we gonna do with the kids now, so on and so forth, and all of that. I think this is an opportunity for them to continue to increase membership because that's a resource in our community that I think is highly underutilized.
Good.
I'd like to also mention that over the summer, there was a very active basketball league that went on and there were some light replacements that had to go on, not at the magnitude of the high school, but those lights were actually replaced by my son and daughter-in-law with the help of Borough Manager Flanders on the day of a very important start to, to the programming that was going on. So, I just wanted to add that as well. Thank you.
Good. Pottstown School Board, Mr. Heidel. Anyone from the school board? Okay. Library, Mr. Green. Ad-hoc zoning, Counselor Proxel. Animal Committee, Vice President Miller.
I just want to let everybody know that Pottstown Falls is going to be doing Santa Photos with pets downtown this Saturday at the New York Plaza from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., so I hope to see Dakota and Maggie there.
Maggie will be there.
Thank you.
Good.
Good evening, council. I just want to let you know that the camera, the two cameras that we purchased there with the grant are in the process of being put in. I would suspect that they should be completed within the next couple of weeks. At this point, it's just getting the electric and everything hooked up. So, they're working on that. We're hoping they can get that done in two weeks and they're both in areas that would be very beneficial for the borough and the police. One of the things that I also want to say is we were very successful for the No Shave November and based on that, we are going to do Christmas shopping or holiday shopping on December the 16th and we'll be inviting 35 children to purchase gifts. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Chief?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I actually have a safety question. With the closed-loop system, the new lights that are going in, my understanding that the light, there's been a lot of accidents at King and Manatoni. The light is so large that people are looking down King Street.
Correct.
Light at High Street. Is there, is there any correction that could be done to that?
We actually just had a meeting with Doug to reference to that because the lights sit back and Doug has assured me, am I correct, Doug, that intersection will be getting additional lights too?
That will eventually get the full upgrade. Unfortunately, right now, we're waiting to find out when the bridge is going because we don't want to have the bases for the new poles put in on the bridge side for fear they're gonna be in the way. So, we will make some upgrades to the thing in the interim, but that intersection will get a full upgrade. It's just a matter of the coordination with the bridge.
And, and the interim will be when?
Right now, the contractor's working out Charlotte Street and he'll go out Charlotte to Mervine when he's finished out there and then we'll redirect him down that way. We have a light up at Bourbon. I am Burke's, it has to be picked up. King and Manatoni, we'll see what we can do. I'm hoping to reuse some of the better components that we have at other intersections, at least upgrade that as much as I can with existing equipment that we have.
And while we're still on safety, Chief, and Doug, this applies to you, there's, there's a lot of lights out in the 100 block of High Street. Streetlights that I'm, under the understanding that it's a PICO issue and PICO was contacted and they haven't been repaired as of yet. So, we can't just leave it at, we're gonna contact PICO. If PICO is not going to take care of the power that they need to take care of, we need to contact the PUC. We can't just let it go at, oh, well, it's a PICO problem and we're not gonna do anything about it because it's dark, it's dangerous, and there's businesses down there that are trying to, they're trying to have good, high-end businesses down there and they're having a lot of difficulty. So, where are we, do you know, with the lights that are out in the streets?
While we're in discussion, I'm just ready to put another list down to PICO again with the dates that the lights have been out since and we're trying to get them to get their underground people up here. All the problems are underground. They have to dig up the streets and try and locate where the wires have burned off at.
I understand the problem. I just want to make sure that we're pursuing the.
Yeah, we are. Actually, Counselor Miller, this morning I received an email from PICO with their list of work orders on the lights that they've worked on and I think we need to go through that because what has happened is they've come in, they've repaired a light, and then the next one on the string goes out. So, Doug and I will get together this week and if we can't get a resolution from PICO, then I think, yeah, what you're suggesting would be appropriate.
And just for your information, though, the police department on a regular basis goes out and surveys streetlights and when we find them, we create a list and turn it over to Doug. We did that probably just a month ago.
I have a question as well about newly inserted cameras at Franklin and High Street. Someone had made a call to me and noted that one of them is not rotating 360 degrees. Are they supposed to rotate?
That camera has to be, is part of the one that's getting realigned. Basically, what happened was when we had that camera installed originally, it was looking at the bank, which is now closed. So, we didn't have the camera rotating, so we were always focused on the bank. Now, you can see both banks from that corner. Now, we're going to release that and have the camera turn back, but that's part of the reconfiguration of the new camera system.
Is there, is there a timeframe?
I'm hoping everything happens by the end of December.
Okay. Thank you. And also, in relation to, this is school safety, so maybe it's an intersection of school and police, but some recent activity at one of our school districts is now placing me in a position, even transitioning out of being the mayor, to be concerned about issues within the school where there's possible criminal activity and this may lead to a push for cameras in every classroom. So, I don't know if that, that's something that maybe will be coming up in the future. Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Emergency Services Reports.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name's Miles Feather. I'm with the Phillies. I'm the vice president and I'm gonna give you our monthly report. For training this month, we currently and still have five firefighters that are in the Instructor One and Educational Methodology Certification Class and they should be graduating in January. Our seniors along with our juniors and explorers did a simulated search and rescue of a missing person down at the Memorial Park this past month and we got everybody back okay. Fundraising, we had our Chinese auction just recently down at, we held it down at the Goodwill Fire Company. We thanked them for giving us their space to use and it was our most successful to date. We still have our Sportsman's Raffle going off. Anybody needs any of, wants any of those tickets, please contact myself. Our officers, we have two other officers here, please contact them. As I reported last month, we have remodeled our basement and begun hanging some old photos along with some of our newer photos and we're still looking for sponsors for those photos which will be hung in our basement and meeting room. Our juniors and explorers this month, the juniors and explorers worked with SCBA and search and rescue in a confined, controlled environment. The activity was monitored and supervised by our senior firefighters. In-house events, on New Year's Day, we will have pork and sauerkraut in our, in our social room for our, for our members and a guest at no cost to them because sometimes people just don't have a place to go. In the community, we will be participating with the Pottstown PD's Shop with the Cop on Saturday, December 16th at 10, 10 o'clock in the morning and we will be chauffeuring Santa Claus around town on Sunday, December 16th on top of Engine 694, starting at noon. So, watch and listen for Santa coming to your neighborhood. That's all I have.
Good evening, councilors. As, as Miles just gave the report, the report that we give every month is just to let everyone know in the community how hard we're trying to work to keep things alive in the community as how hard the fire company works, all the fire companies work together to, to make known what it takes to run a fire company or a volunteer organization. Over the past couple of years, I personally talked to everybody except from Counselor Arms about the past, the present, and the future of the fire department, the volunteer fire department in Pottstown. Since we have talked, things haven't got any better. Volunteer firefighters are so hard to find and if you do find them, keeping them is through them going to 188 hours of school and then come back to Pottstown to risk their life for no pay. The line is not very long. Everything we do in town, as far as, the things that we do as far as helping, running calls, probably close to 1,000 calls a year. And all the fundraisers. Fundraisers back then were pretty good in the, in the borough, really the citizens really backed you up. That doesn't happen. Fundraisers are so hard to do to make any money. Across the country, volunteer firefighter, volunteer fire companies are closing every week for two main reasons, lack of volunteer or lack of money. In our, in our situation in Pottstown, we have both those situations. It's very hard to operate the fire company and to take care of the firefighters. I think that. care of the firefighters. I think that the council even voted on to give the volunteer firefighters who lived in Pottstown a stipend or tax break. And that was happening in like June. And we have heard nothing since. If they help that, to give them a little boost to make them more interested in staying a volunteer firefighter. As everything else, the firefighters that we have now are getting older, are getting married, changing jobs, moving out. It's very hard to maintain the number of firefighters that we can to safely control a fire situation. We need all the help, working together between the borough and the fire, all the fire companies together to continue to do that. With different incentive programs, anything, the incentive programs, or anything that we can do to help keep interested. Plus, some of the other things, I'm not the smartest guy in the world, but if somebody's going to give me a $5.2 million gift each year, I'd make sure I secure it for the next year. So if the councilors can come into the fire companies, see where we're at, talk to us, see what we need to do to continue to move forward, probably get some incentive breaks for the firefighters, and try to work together to make that happen. Thanks.
Kevin Yager from Goodwill Fire Company. I apologize that I wasn't here at the November meeting, as I was on vacation. But I would like to go back and update you on what was going on at Goodwill in October. Besides the emergency calls, 52 of those, by the way, we had several things going on throughout the month. October 7th, we attended a live burn with the West End Fire Company. October 16th and 17th, four officers went to officer development classes at the Abington Public Safety Training Center. October 16th, we did an extrication training at Goodwill in the back parking lot. That's when we cut up the big van that was sitting out back. October 19th, we took part in the park, the Pottstown Area Rapid Transit Bus Awareness Training. October 21 and 22, we did Fire Academy lunches at the Montgomery County Public Safety Training Center. That's a large fundraiser for us. Throughout that month, we also had four people attend a bus rescue operations class. That's a 16-hour class on extricating people from bus accidents, just working with a bus. That was held down at Santa Toga Fire Company. We had a member attend Incident Safety Officer Class at the Fire Academy. October 30th, we had two people attend a Stop the Bleed Train the Trainer in Harrisburg. So that we actually have a couple instructors that can go out and teach how to control bleeding, whether it be anything from minor to massive damage, up to and including tourniquets. As far as fire prevention, it was a pretty busy month for us. We attended displays at the Home Depot, New Hanover Fire Company, the Seventh Day Adventist Church, and the Lower Pots Grove Community Day. We did prevention lectures to classrooms in schools at the Early Head Start, the Grace Early Learning Center for multiple days, Peak at the Pottstown High School, the YMCA, the Head Start, the Windcroft Highland House, the YWCA, Hens, Dotwin Academy, and Barth Elementary. That one was done in conjunction with the Phillies' effort. We did fire extinguisher training at the Masonic Lodge for the people who were running the Temple of Terror. They had a lot of things going on inside that building. And they asked us to come out and go over fire extinguishers, safety, exit drills, and what to do if their fire alarm system would activate during their display. We also attended the Halloween Parade and safe houses at the Y and at Manor Care. In November, we did another 55 emergency calls. We attended the Hill Schools Bonfire, stood by for that. And we were involved with two episodes with the Red Cross Smoke Detector Program, where we went out and hung door hangers. And then on Saturday morning, went back out and actually either installed smoke detectors, or inspected the ones that they have, or helped them out with batteries, or any number of things that had to do with their smoke detectors. And the target area was up in the manor in the West Walnut Street, West Chestnut, West Beach. In addition to that, on the 4th, we had seven members attend the Art of First Dew. That's a renowned speaker that came into the area. We were at East Greenville Fire Company for eight hours, learning about what to do when you're the first one on the scene of a fire. On the 6th, we did a safety talk for Girl Scouts troop in our station. The 14th was our training night. We were doing driver training and pump training on Squad 69. On the 16th, we installed 15 more smoke detectors in various houses throughout the borough. The 18th, we did another Fire Academy Lunch, another fundraiser. 25th, we did some training on the river, which I'll get to in a minute. And the 29th, we installed two more smoke detectors. And all throughout the month, similarly to the Phillies, we have two people attending the Instructor One Program. Upcoming through December, we have another extrication training. That's actually tomorrow night. We're training with Ring Hill up in Lower Pots Grove, cutting a car apart. On the 14th, we're doing an EMS training that will help us out with the use of a new drug that we're going to have on the ambulance. Primarily an EMS effort, but it will help the firemen as well. It's a training on the uses of ketamine. 12/17, we'll be helping out the Phillies and going out and doing the Santa Run. And there'll be an EMT class. We're holding that at Goodwill Fire Company. It's in conjunction with Montgomery County. We don't have anything to do with the actual administration of the class. We use all of our equipment and all of our own instructors to teach the class in-house. So as long as there is enough enrollment, that'll start on January the 6th. One of the trainings that we did on the river, just to let you know, a new initiative for Goodwill Fire Company is that we partnered with Lansdale EMS. And we purchased two used inflatable rescue boats for use in our community. Along with that came a lot of water rescue equipment, some life vests, some PFDs, ring buoys, all the equipment that would go along with the boat, and the trailers. So we've been going out, as long as the weather's been nice, and, yeah, we're fair weather trainers at this point, going out and getting used to using the boats. We want to get proficient in it. We are not responding to calls at this point until we become proficient. A lot of our people are already trained at the boat operations and all the other levels of water rescue. However, we want to get, we want to get good at operating those boats before we start to try and rescue somebody. In the meantime, we will continue to rely on Collegeville and Lynnfield to help us with those water rescues, should we need to do anything by boat. We will be opening up approximately six new classes that will be open to all of the firefighters in Pottstown, to try to get us a solid water rescue response team that, should we need to put those boats in the service, we have a good group of people that are going to be able to go out and affect that. Finally, before the meeting, I was speaking to Council President Wynn, and he referred to the big number at the end of the year. And unfortunately, I knew what he meant by that. And I just want to take a second to explain our big number. You guys give us $196,000 a year, broken down over 12 months. And where does it go? $162,500 just goes to staff. That's wages and workman's comp, and about $300 in uniform costs for 2016. My drivers make $11.50 an hour. Part-time work, $10 an hour. $196,000, take away that $162,000, that's all for staff, that leaves me with $33,000 to pay for vehicle expenses, maintenance, fuel, insurance on the rest of the stuff, liability on the equipment, auto insurance. Just those couple things come to $29,000 every year. 2016, we took $14,000 of Goodwill's fundraising money to supplement the borough account because it just wasn't there. So I understand that the borough is tight. Please understand that we are just as tight. And I again repeat, my staff is making $11.50 an hour. And they've been at that rate, or a similar rate, as long as I've been chief. And this is my seventh year. I'm sorry, eighth year. Charlie talked about the fundraising. And you've heard the fundraising efforts that we do. Hopefully, you've seen some of the fundraising that we've done throughout the year that you may not have heard about in my reports because they're not timely here. But I would like to ask one quick question, or two quick questions before we go. If anybody can help me out, because I'd really like to help these people out, you know, when is the police department going to be doing a hoagie sale for their next new vehicle? Or when will Public Works be out doing a boot drive to help fix the roof on their building? Because that's what we're doing. That's what our fundraising money goes to. I'm making a bunch of lunches for the Fire Academy, so that I can fix my roof, pay for my rescue truck, $956 per month, over almost 15 years now. That's what we're doing. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilors. Dave Oddick, Chief of North End Fire Company, for those of you who don't know who I am. I don't want to go into too much detail, especially because I don't want to reiterate a lot of things. But the trainings, the bus rescue class, we had multiple firefighters involved in that. We have multiple firefighters involved in the Instructor One course that's ongoing right now. But the biggest thing I wanted to use my time up here for is, unfortunately, I was in the process this afternoon of doing interviews, because career firefighter Michael Sedlock has announced his retirement from North End Fire Company. But what I want to do is use this time to basically thank him for his years of dedicated service to North End Fire Company, and his selfless acts of kindness towards the fire company and towards the citizens of the borough of Pottstown. Unfortunately, our interviews ran a little late. I wasn't able to be here for the presentation, but it was definitely well deserved. And I thank each and every one of you for the consideration for him for that award. It's definitely, again, I can't stress enough, it's very well deserved. You know, as Kevin expressed, each one of the four fire companies is financially strapped. You know, North End Fire Company, we had to make a lot of bold and drastic moves over the last six to eight months to be able to provide fire protection service to the borough of Pottstown. You know, we have an obligation as a North End Fire Company and the Pottstown Fire Department to provide financial, or not financial, fire protection service to the borough of Pottstown. But also, the borough has a responsibility to provide us with the resources to provide that service. You know, again, you know, we were standing out on a street corner, Black Friday, when a lot of our members could have been home with their families. I had 11 members standing on the corner of Charlotte and Wilson Street with a fire boot in their hand, asking for donations. You know, it's tough. It's tough across the board. But, you know, we definitely need to work together and work to a common goal, and get to a common solution to this problem versus, you know, coming at, the fire companies constantly to, you know, what can we cut from you? What can we do for you? You know, what can we take away from you? We need to get away from that mentality. We need to get to the mentality of what can we do to better the department and better the protection of the borough of Pottstown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council members, I'll try to be quick. I'm not up here, I'm not going to talk to you about the financials, but I want to talk to you about how good your fire department is. These guys are volunteers. They come and told you that you do a lot of activities. The unfortunate news that I have for you is, actually, last night, we did experience a dwelling fire. We burned a third-floor apartment, bedroom in an apartment. I will tell you that the first firefighter through the door was one of the career firefighters. He was able to keep the fire in check until the rest of the volunteers arrived. So we are very dependent upon the volunteers. As a result of this fire, six people are displaced. So it could have been a lot worse, but because we're able to get on scene, and these volunteers do a fantastic job. When I arrived, I got an overview of the situation. I turned around, I had 30 volunteers standing in front of me. Okay? But you've got to also remember, since I've been here, this is the first dwelling fire. And these guys are very anxious to show you how good they are. So when it came in as a dwelling fire, they were there to show up and do their part. I wish I had 30 firefighters every call that I go on to. I can go to a fire alarm in our high-rise, which is a reported fire, and I got four or five guys. So I wanted to let you know that you have a fantastic fire department. The volunteers here are, on average, are saving you between $4 and $5 million a year if this was a totally career fire department. They talk to you a little bit about training. We've, looking at the last couple ISO reports, which is the Insurance Service Office, which basically determines the insurance that the businesses have to play, have to pay, rather, is, the borough has, is a four. We should be a three. Where we got beat up is on our documentation and/or amount of training. So as you heard, they're doing their part. They're stepping up. They're doing the training. We're bringing training to town, which is new for them. Before, they had to travel outside of town. In cooperation with the officers, we're bringing this training here so that we can increase our ISO rating to a three, which would mean better rates for our businesses and our homeowners. Administratively, I am reviewing our policies, are updating our policies, so that they are more current, and more in line, and more efficient. In addition, moving into next year, working with the solicitor, we are pushing to maybe strengthen some of our ordinances, as well as the fire code, to make it more safe and more efficient. We are sending information to the Pennsylvania Department of Labor Industry, which requires their approval before we can do it locally here. Once we get their approval, I will be in front of you again, making the recommendations for those. But again, I just wanted to stress that you have an excellent fire department here. And they make my job easy. Without them, I'm just one guy. So thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Assar?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to, I spent hundreds of hours with the fire departments over the last couple of years, learning about the fire services. And I think I have a pretty good handle on what you provide to the borough, and the expenses, and the shortfalls that you're experiencing. My November Borough Buzz even went out to the fire companies and tried to, you know, we interviewed each one of the fire companies to express the difficulties, the challenges, and everything that the fire companies are facing today. I want to thank each and every fire department for their service. I want to offer my apologies for a memo that you received. I think it is completely out of line. I'm very upset that it had happened. There is no reason for anybody to be threatening fire companies for a reduction in monthly funds when they are providing their financial reports as required by their service agreements. And again, there was only one person on council that had knowledge of this memo, and six councilors were unaware. So again, you have my sincerest apologies. And thank you for your service. And we'll be discussing more of this during budget.
Thank you.
Good. Mayor's Report.
Oh, sure. Thank you. I'd just like to thank the fire service. That was a very comprehensive report that you provided. And to Mr. Pierce at the Phillies Fire Company, as you talk about volunteerism, and you have the most volunteers, I think. Is that true? Is he still here? Charlie?
If I may?
Please.
Ms. Mayor.
On record, the Phillies do have the most amount of volunteers on record. And again, they are very integral. But again, as you saw, as I gave the report earlier, when we have the big fire, that's when they come out. I do need the volunteers on the small calls. And between the four companies, the continued support and commitment from them is about the same. However, the Phillies, again, to answer your question, do have the most on paper.
Thank you. I also was at an event for first responders, where they had a lot of their volunteers there. And there were quite a few young people. So that was the point that I was driving at, that they had recruited some young people to be involved in their volunteerism, which is excellent for a community such as Pottstown per se, with a school district with, you know, the free and reduced lunch criteria. And volunteerism really attaches itself in Maslow's hierarchy of needs, right at the top. So anywhere you have volunteers, people really understand. And they're not struggling at the bottom of that pyramid with the sense... And they're not struggling at the bottom of that pyramid with the sense of belonging. They've gone past that. So any time that you do see volunteerism, you know that you have strong people.
And to answer that, with the young firefighters that we are recruiting, we do have an agreement with the school district and a cooperation agreement with the school district to attempt to recruit the junior firefighters. The Phillies have an Explorer program as well as Empire. And the North End has a junior program. And the difference between an Explorer is an Explorer is fourteen and fifteen years old where a junior firefighter is sixteen and seventeen.
And what is the limit for a firefighter? I mean, I heard the comment that many are getting older. What does getting older mean in terms of signing up to be a firefighter?
Well, to actually fight fire inside a building, you have to be a minimum of eighteen years old. And that, it deals with the child labor laws. Plus, we also try to do it safely. You've got to remember though, everybody's running out of a burning building. We're the ones running in. So it kind of does make us a little crazy, I think. But it's a very dangerous and a very physical job. The equipment that we wear alone can weigh anywhere from fifty to sixty pounds. So as we start to age, our bodies take a toll. I can tell you that in my thirty-two years of fighting fire, I've broken my back, I've broken my knees, I've broken my ankles probably about seven times. So it's a very physical, demanding job that does take its wear and tear on the body. And as they do start to age, they're finding that they want to come out less and less because it is painful. So, but we are always looking for the new and the younger firefighters and we will train them and outfit them.
So what is the maximum age? And is there any criteria such as with police, they have to go through physical agility as part of their hiring process? And in a career, in a career company situation, is that a requirement versus the volunteer?
Being that it's volunteer, the, to be blunt, are you eighteen? Do you have a pulse and can you walk upright? I mean, quite honestly, we're taking any help that we're getting. The, there's no age limit. We do have some firefighters that are in their seventies. They may not be running into buildings on fire, but they do help in other ways.
Okay, thank you. That was really, really what I was trying to find, is if there is a limit and there is not.
There is not.
Under the volunteer situation.
And we're always looking for help. I'll train you personally.
Don't tempt me. Because I'll show up. Well, I'd just like to make this, like, this is probably the last time as mayor that I'll be in a broadcast for PCTV. So I would just like to thank all of the voters who've come out, not only over these two terms, but the voters that have stood by me through the first school board race in nineteen ninety-seven, where I had to pull out of the public forum for an emergency C-section, to come back, to become a part of a very strong team to, you know, sweep the school board race on both sides. That was very exciting. After two years of operating under the notion that how unpolitical the school board was, with my feet to the fire, learned exactly how political the school board was. And after two years, felt an onus and an unction and a desire to come to the municipal side of government, to understand the inner workings from this side. That required a transition for me from one side of the political aisle as a Democrat to the side of Republican. Was that a decide, was that a decision on the philosophy of one side or another? It absolutely was not. But irregardless of the parameters that were the driver behind that decision, I can say today that I understand more about the political process from partisanism as well as how it should be better separated from governance. So I'd just like to say, I think I could write a book on that just by my personal experiences in Pottstown. It was very overwhelming to be elected by people that I knew were long-term Democrats who are very afraid but confident because they knew me from the grassroots and they knew me from community advocacy, not so much as organizing people but resourcing people so that they could be empowered to pursue their own decisions with knowledge and to make their own choices from a menu of options and not just by, per se, having a big giant group for one person's problem. So the more people that are actually empowered and understand how to pursue their issues really raises the base. And we're only as strong as our weakest link. And I believe also, one thing that I've always stressed is that the common stock and the wealth of a community is the people. And I'd never have lost sight of that and I never will lose sight of that. I would like to thank the colleagues and the presidents and managers that I've worked with over the years. I wouldn't say it was stressful. Of course, they can't say it's stressful either because they're getting a lot more money than I am to do their job. So I think they're quite suited and equipped for the challenges that they face. I'd like to just bring up three points that cover both terms. And one of those, I don't have it written down here. One of those is the Mayor's Initiative on Neighborhoods, which was inside of the first term, which was expanded into the CARES Day. And expanded into the CARES Day with the Hill School, the Community College and the school district all coming together for a select and intentional day of service to the community. And back to the original thrust of the Mayor's Initiative on Neighborhoods was to encourage residents to come out and be a part of that same intensality on their own. And that still is in position and that still is needed because it's really about the empowerment of every person who's living in Pottstown. You know, from house to house, from corner to corner, whether it's a business or a home or an apartment. Everybody has a part to play. I'd like to talk about the prayer initiative that was instituted during the first term of having an invocation. And during this term, we alternated with invocation and moment of silence. But I was just reviewing yesterday, the Senate, the United States Senate opens in prayer with every session. Those prayers are not restricted. Our prayers had been restricted. There were people that prayed in Jesus' name in the state senate in Washington DC. And, you know, this prayer effort did not only just include people that would be present in this room, but others that commit to keep the issues of the borough lifted in prayer, which is a universal spiritual activity that no one owns. And I think that we should always be thankful for those who take a position in prayer for the betterment of the common good. And I think I mentioned that in my prayer invocation today. The second thing I'd like to highlight is the number of weddings. Over two terms, close to one hundred weddings. And that's important. And another thing I'd just like to mention in context of weddings is the stabilization of a nation. The stabilization of a nation boils down to the stabilization of families. So the more stable families we have, the more stable our nation is. So the stabilization of families and, just to mention, that was one of the most fun parts of the job, was conducting those wedding ceremonies. But as I continue, the stabilization of families will be a priority as I would continue in the grassroots and also learning more about the urban areas in the sixth congressional district. And that's very important because many of those families in that district are in challenging school districts that are underfunded. And that is an issue at hand all across America, but especially in areas where we know that there are distinct deficits that are leading to substandard existences in some areas, such as Reading, Pennsylvania, with possibly by now over a hundred million dollars deficit. Teachers are purchasing school supplies to conduct their education, the educational process, and these expenses are not tax deductible. So I want to go and move on to an intersecting government issue in this transition for myself. As far as leaving the office of mayor as one government representation, I will still continue in the government representation through spiritual angles. And I invite you on December thirty-first to attend a special service where I've been given a bench that's going to have a lot of influence in the community in the coming years, having met a carpenter who has produced a bench for me that says "Live, Love and Laugh." Well, what does that have to do with government? It has to do with the government of understanding that where there's someplace for you to kneel, where there's someplace for you to sit, where there's a safe place for you to lay down your head, there is a place for you to remember others that do not have, do not have this privilege. There are others that do not share in many of the privileges that we take for granted in America. So if you'd like more information on that location for December thirty-first, please contact me. And I would be glad to see you. It'll be ten AM on that day. That's the end of my report and thank you all so very much.
Thank you. Our manager's report, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. First, I want to correct a misperception or misstatement by Councilor Miller. She is correct that a memorandum was sent to the four company chiefs, fire chiefs. It was not a threatening memo. In fact, it was a memorandum advising them that I was going to introduce a concept at the Borough Council meeting today to Borough Council. In fact, it specifically said that I wanted to give them a heads up so that they weren't blindsided. It's disappointing that somebody would perceive trying to be inclusive and transparent is inappropriate. But nonetheless, you all received emails from the three of the four fire companies today that I suspect some of you had no idea what the emails were referencing. For clarification, last year, you had asked the four companies to provide counsel with monthly updates. And over the past year, you've received updates from one company and intermittently the other three. To help motivate the companies to provide those monthly reports, last week I notified them that I would be suggesting the withholding of some monthly funding as an incentive, not taking funding away, but withholding funding and then repaying it as the reports were given. Since that memorandum went out to the four chiefs, I met with Kevin Yerder, the Chief of Goodwill. He spoke this evening. He shared some of his concerns regarding the concept. And today, you all received the emails from three of the other company chiefs. Some of the concerns that were shared are valid. And with that said, I'm not going to be making the recommendation. In fact, it probably would have went unnoticed if we would have had the discussion and left it at that. But nonetheless, I'll be passing it on to Justin moving forward and he can address the four companies and hopefully come up with a means to get this done that isn't perceived in the way this was perceived. I want to let everybody know that the next joint Borough Council School Board meeting will be held on Monday, January the twenty-second at seven o'clock PM at the Pottstown High School cafeteria. I believe the school board has a voting meeting, which I've been told will be very short. At that time, the joint meeting can commence. Also, I want to remind everyone that tomorrow, December seventh, is Pearl Harbor Day. If you have an American flag, please fly it at half mast. And I know that many of you had questions regarding the closing of Pollock Park for environmental reasons. I believe that all of you received some talking points that were drawn up by our engineers. I'd ask Mr. Keller to provide an update as where we are today with that.
Sure, thank you. So through the master plan development at Pollock Park, one of the recommendations was to undergo a Phase One environmental site assessment because the site was used as a former scrapyard for many years. We went through and did the Phase One. And after the Phase One was concluded, they recommended that we go in and have soil samples conducted to determine the nature of the contaminants that may be present in that soil. We did receive a grant through the EPA Brownfield Assessments Program to conduct the environmental assessments at the park. And we did get preliminary results back on November twenty-second at about two thirty PM, where it was indicated that there are heavy metals and PCBs present in the soil of that site. I have to commend our staff. They acted quickly and appropriately and they closed the park and posted it with signs until we have the results of the study validated. The consultants, environmental standards who are looking into this for us, since the soil, since the contaminants are contained in the soil and Pollock Park is covered with either paving or grass, they feel that there's little potential for contamination via airborne contaminants to neighboring properties. But nonetheless, the park will remain closed out of an abundance of caution. You know, it should be noted that the PAD residential minimum concentration standards are based on a residential, very conservative scenario, residential scenario. So assuming that somebody would be living there, you know, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, which isn't the case at a park, you're in for a few hours and you're out. But nonetheless, we are closing it until we complete our assessment. And more than likely, it will remain closed until we can get a grant from either the EPA or DEP or DCR or a combination of those to clean up the site and have it remediated.
Thank you, Justin. And finally, I hope you all have a happy and safe holiday season.
This is regarding Ms. Clark and the new manufacturing business. I did receive a call from that individual as well to meet with me. And I did make him aware that I was the outgoing mayor and he still wanted to meet with me until this morning when he called and canceled that meeting. And I directed him to call Ginny, the Borough Manager's Secretary, to get Mayor-elect Hendrick's information that they could commence with whatever type of issues he's bringing to the table. Thank you.
Okay. Number ten is a presentation by our Utilities Department.
Good evening. Again, Brent Wagner, Utilities Director. The scope of this is, last week, we met with two council members, Kirkland and Miller and plus Mark and Justin to discuss our budgets. And a part of that presentation, I was requested tonight to present what is the, basically, the value of the authority and what is the Utilities Department offering. Just a brief analysis in regards to our budget. As you're aware, the water and sewer rates are not, we're not increasing next year. The water operating budget of the water treatment plant is one point five million. And the sewer, the wastewater treatment budget is three point seven million. If you had a chance to review that, you'll see the water budget is maintained for the operations. And the sewer, the wastewater treatment plant has increased nine percent. And that is directly correlated to the capital improvement plans that we're introducing next year with a new dryer operation. A quick review, if you look at the income or from our rate payers and our townships that provide our income to the Utilities Department and Doug's Department as well, the authority brings in fifteen point five million dollars in a year. And after all the expenses, debts are paid, there's an excess of about three million dollars left that goes in compartments of paying or associated, like Mark, I'll pick on Mark, you know, sixty to sixty-five percent of his salary is paid by the Utilities Department. Same with Justin and other departments up here, other set police and fire and numerous other departments. Basically, as you look forward, where we're headed next with the Department and Authority, the Authority will be debt-free in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. So if you look at what the Authority is currently doing, about three million... So if you look at what the authority is currently doing, about $3 million in capital improvements in the town and with the water and wastewater treatment plant, we're going to increase that up to almost $8 million a year in the near future, which means there's going to be a tremendous amount of construction going on in the streets with new sewer lines and new water lines. And obviously, hopefully, you'll have the same debacle that we had with regards to paving. We'll be paving more borough streets and obviously helping out the townships that we support in regards to water systems and the sewer systems. In reference to what we have done to offset our increases, if you hear, you know, in 2023, we're debt-free, but if you look at the cost savings that we've done just briefly, it's like electric. Entire borough, the authority, bidded out the electric. And over the next, through 2021, the authority plus the borough will see a savings of $650,000 in electrical charges. We bidded our electric at the right moment with the low fees, and we reduced our electric costs across the board with the borough and authority 25%. In regards to our operation budgets, we forward to next year, as I mentioned, we're at 3.7. We are reducing by one manager next year. We're optimizing our maintenance department. One of the goals, as Mark, when he was hired, was make a maintenance division. And we are fully up and running over the last two years. And with that scope of operations, we see a benefit of our operation between water and wastewater treatment plant in excess of $250,000 a year in savings. And as I mentioned, the dryer, I'm sure you've heard the hiccups with our dryer that we've had over the last 10 years. This dryer investment that's going to be upon us is going to lower our operation budgets, as you see here, 3.7 next year. We should be down in the low 3 million range. And with that in mind, if you notice the graph that we presented, you all see the haulers that come in at the wastewater treatment plant. I'm sure you see the trucks coming around the whole area. On average, we produce a truck coming in and out of the plant every five minutes. Again, as we operate the Utilities Department, I'm not supposed to use the word profit, but we do run it like a profit business. If you look at through 2021, that hauling program will equal our operations budget, which means the outside waste coming in is totally paying for the wastewater treatment operations, which means the ratepayers that we pay from the townships to the borough is going to go through total capital improvements, which should substantially our rates increase at a stabilized market. And you can see, if you look at the graph, we went back only to 2004, it's continuing to increase. We are in a market that with this new dryer, that's a conservative estimate of 3% increase. We anticipate we could be as high as $4 to $5 million by 2021 in regards to how we market our operations at the wastewater treatment plant. And then we're also going to be introducing a new, at the wastewater treatment plant, a new headwork screenings, which will anticipate another $100,000 to $200,000 in maintenance costs that we currently see. With, over the last 10 years, if you had a chance to be at the wastewater, I'd give some of the tours, you always hear this term, "rags." Everyone that flushes these rags on the tour, the reusable wipes, well, they cause us a tremendous amount of issues at this point in time, wear and tear on our equipment. With this projected, with this new screen, which will fine screen, we will no longer have a maintenance issue, which will decrease our maintenance costs because we're fine screening that out. In regards to the water treatment plant, the facility, in my perspective, is basically brand-new. In the last three, four years, we've done a tremendous amount of capital improvements up there in regards to every piece of equipment has been rebuilt or brand-new. And our last projection is our computer operation systems will be upgraded before Mark leaves, which is our last big item to do. In a quick perspective, if you don't, the way that the authority works, the water plant is owned by the authority and operated by the borough. And the wastewater is owned by the authority and leased to the borough and operated by the borough. And basically, to sum it up, the authority has put the vision that we're always looking for. We have a five- and 10-year capital plan. And obviously, our goal is to stabilize and provide as much of our profit, if you want to say, is back to capital improvements and improving the town.
Brent? I'm Brent. I have a couple of questions. I know that different municipalities run their wastewater operations in different ways to be able to give capital funds back to, or contribute capital funds back to the municipality. So for example, right now, your capital funds would go to the water lines, the sewer lines, and then repaving the streets once they're replaced. There's other municipalities that give back funding towards the Police Department and the Fire Department. Is that something that could be looked into, the way the lease is, the change in the lease in order to work with our current public, our current utilities to? There's another option of a different kind of lease to be able to put funding towards other expenses within the borough that are needed?
Well, currently, as I mentioned, the authority or the Utilities Department doesn't put 60% to 65% of anyone, it's a conjunction with the Utilities Department. If you give that perspective, what you're talking about in regards to, if you look at Reading, what they do, that they have a lease system up there, and they do provide funds back to their council, to their operation plant. I don't know the legalities of that. That would have to turn into a legal matter, but there is options out there if you look at what Reading does and other municipalities. But in regards to how we already provide services, it is providing funds back, but not to like the departments that you're mentioning.
Correct. But they still own, they still own those plants. It's just that the lease is structured differently so that they're getting funding to
That is my understanding.
whatever their needed departments are. Chuck, that's probably a legal question. Is that something that we can look into in the future?
Certainly, we can look into it. I'm not familiar with the Reading structure, but if you think that's an appropriate model, we can look into it and see how that works.
And then also, I know other municipalities do things differently. They do incentives for payment, and, you know, it's very important to get payments in quickly, obviously, because the monies that you come in collect interest, or you don't want to be sitting on any kind of debts. It's no secret that it's a pet peeve of mine that if you are one day late with your water, sewer, trash bill in the Borough of Pottstown, you get a 10% penalty. To me, I'm going to say it's extortion. There are other municipalities that do things differently. They offer an incentive to pay your bill early instead of this huge penalty to pay your bill late. And that being done gets more money in quickly, and then you're not relying on, I mean, I hope that they're not funding or, you know, making a profit off of people that are struggling to pay their utilities late. And I would hope that going forward, since I got no traction in that, that that is something that the council, the authority, the wastewater, the utilities will look at, take seriously into consideration, and please implement.
Any other comments? Thank you very much.
So you're basically saying that because of the revenue that the dryers is generating?
The dryer does not generate the revenue. It's processing of our biosalts.
Okay. Because of this process, at a certain time, what year is that, that it starts generating?
If you look at the current, the new dryer that we referenced, the new dryer, we're going to be, the dryer is 1.7 million. Based upon the review of what the payback period is, what will pay back through the payback of the new dryer? Because the operator, with this new dryer, we will be able to do our own maintenance, and we will not see the same type of wear and tear like the old dryer. The old dryer was degraded by wear and tear by biosalts wearing metal. This is a belt-type dryer, so anticipated maintenance for this dryer is $70,000 a year compared to our old dryer is about $500,000 to $600,000 a year. And we can do it, the new dryer, ourselves. It's no different than repairing car with my staff. Compared to the old dryer, I had professional welders that were certified on our pressure vessel and do that kind of work, and we do not have a labor.
So in the future, you foresee a profit?
Yes. With this new dryer, we're going to be able to produce poly in the neighborhood at almost 160% processing, which opens up the avenue of this graph that we can accept more lease. We're in a limiting factor right now, but based upon this new dryer, we're going to be able to open 160% of our production.
And that's already factored into your 2022, 2023 debt-free, or is that without that?
That debt-free is ready to all factor in. We're actually paying for the dryer and the capital improvements based upon our capital reserves.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation by Jamar Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have handouts for everyone except the solicitor and the secretary. Good evening. My name is Jamar Kelly with the Governor's Center for Local Government Services. I am here tonight to bring you information about the Early Intervention Grant Program. I mentioned it briefly about a month or two ago, and I came back tonight to provide more details to Borough Council. The, some highlights about the program. It is offered to provide guidance for municipalities interested in improving their financial position. We offer financial assistance for the development and implementation of multi-year financial management plans. The maximum funding amount for the grant is $200,000 with a 50% matching requirement. We are currently evaluating the possibility of scaling down the matching percentage based on the fiscal health of the borough. Just some background information, in June of 2009, Pottstown completed its first early intervention program that was conducted by Management Partners Incorporated. We are recommending tonight that we up, actually, as a general rule of thumb, the department recommends these multi-year financial plans be updated every five years. So that would bring you to about nine years since you first engaged in this program. We would recommend engaging in a Phase Two study that would include an update of the financials from the Phase One financial forecast. In your packet, I have included the recommendations from the first-phase early intervention program. Some of you may not have been on council at that time. The, it's a 133-page document. I'm not going to ask you to read 133 pages, but the highlights from the back, the Cliff Notes, are there. There were 122 recommendations. The borough followed through on the majority of those recommendations, and there were significant financial savings. We're coming back to say, we encourage you to do another phase to address some of the potential budget shortfalls that you're looking at in the next couple of years. Again, we would say, use these recommendations that you see before you as the baseline to figure out what your priorities would be when you engage in the next phase of the early intervention program. Some new areas of concentration could focus on Main Street, could also include a component on economic and business development as well for your downtown area. The, in 2007, when you began the first phase of your early intervention program, the cost of that effort was $65,000 from start to finish. And the borough contributed $26,000 in cash and $6,500 in in-kind services. Based on our internal review of the audited financial statements of the borough from 2014, 15, and 16, the department is willing to reduce your matching requirement to 20%. It would be an 80/20 split on the grant funding. But it is conditioned upon the borough agreeing to, one of the important components of the plan, there are five important components of the plan. They include a financial condition assessment, a financial trend forecasting analysis, an emergency plan if necessary, a management audit of all of the departments within the borough, multi-year plan adoption, which includes public input on the creation of the document, and then finally, multi-year plan implementation. I would focus on step three, the emergency plan. I'm just going to read the exact text of the language. It says, "The emergency plan should be included to address actions to be taken during six-to-12-month timeframe to avoid a fiscal emergency. The emergency plan should set forth a strategy regarding whether the current fiscal year's budget can and should be reopened, amended, or modified," this would be the 2018 budget, "whether operational and/or personnel reductions should occur, whether short-term borrowing, including possible unfunded debt borrowing, is necessary, and four, whether other types of administrative reorganization or short-term actions should be effectuated in order for the local government to remain solvent in the current fiscal year." So we would recommend a two-track approach that the, in engaging in the plan, the borough would look at short-term recommendations to plug what we potentially see in 2019, the borough possibly running out of funding before the end of the year. So there would be a six-to-12-month emergency action plan to make sure the borough is financially solvent through the end of 2018. And a companion track would be the five-year financial forecast for the borough. It would be both at the same time, short-term needs being met as well as the long-term financial stability of the borough. And that's the gist of the program. I can answer any questions you might have about the program. Again, this is, it's a voluntary program. There's no requirement that you enter into the program. But it is to your advantage to be able to do a deep-dive investigation on all of the departments, all of the current financial obligations, all of your future financial obligations, your collective bargaining agreements, any ancillary or auxiliary contracts that you may have with vendors long-term, your pension valuations, all of that gets evaluated, and a short-term and long-term action plan to meet those needs, financial needs of the borough.
You offered to reduce the matching fee to 20%.
Yes, sir.
That's 20% of what number?
So adjusting for inflation, we don't have an exact number on these plans. That's why I mentioned your first plan was $65,000. I would estimate somewhere between $75,000 and $80,000 would be the maximum cost to do another phase of the plan, so we would cover 80% of that cost.
Okay, so it could be $18,000, $16,000 out of our pocket?
Yes.
Can I ask you a question about your, the first round of this was implemented in 2007 or implemented in 2009? Or was it a two-year study?
It was, the process was initiated in 2007, application, Borough Council resolution approving, entering into the grant agreement. The investigation phase, meeting with all of the stakeholders, choosing a financial management consultant firm, it's about a three-to-six-month process. That went into 2008. The borough picked a firm, Management Partners Incorporated, and then another six to eight months of investigation. And then in 2009, June, the report was produced.
So you said a multi-year strategy. So is this plan also for three years? And the first plan didn't have actuarial assumptions attached to the financial pieces that could be traced?
The borough would have submitted actuarial plans to the financial consultant firm so that those projections could be included in their forecast, yes.
So you were not part of forecasting these assumptions? You were just taking them in?
No. DCD doesn't do... No. DCED doesn't do anything. We help shepherd the process along. The borough picks the firm that they want to complete their financial analysis review.
You know, I'm curious. We have 122 recommendations from 2009, and I'm curious to know how many recommendations we accepted and are still in place at present. Because I've been on enough committees and boards and come up with enough plans and drafts and this and that that just goes on a shelf, or we do it for a year and then say, oh, never mind, let's just go back to doing this the old way. So I would really be interested to know of the 122, what's still in place in 2017.
And, and just to piggyback off of that, I'm just kind of just scanning through this a little bit, and I see some really huge changes that, that I had recommended that have not been implemented, that you guys or DCED had recommended in 2009, and here we are in 2017, and these changes have not been implemented.
And, Madam Vice President, that's where the voluntary portion comes in, because as Councilman Arm said, you can put it on a shelf to collect dust, or you can actively implement it to the benefit of the municipality. So the, the onus is really on the municipality to internalize the document. That's where the public hearing process comes in, and once you internalize it, then you figure out what works for you and what you want to implement, what's most important. And as you re-engage in the process, reviewing what has been done, you can figure out what has been done, what hasn't been done, and maybe what you would rather do. My colleague Andrew Sheaf has some.
Hi, good evening. My name's Andrew Sheaf. I'm a local government policy manager at DCED in the Center for Local Government Services. Thank you for having us tonight. We really appreciate the opportunity to make a presentation here. I would just add that the department really puts a premium on helping to then implement these plans that we're going to help produce. One of the key factors in our assistance in that implementation is that municipalities who have participated in the early intervention program have taken their plan, looked at the recommendations, and then come back to us for further grants and further phases in the plan. So to really make sure that the plan gets implemented, we can provide grants up to $200,000 to help implement some of those items that are in the plan, to make sure it doesn't just sit on the shelf, on the shelf, but will be implemented.
So that was done last time, or not, or you're presenting it today? Is it always a part of?
It is always a part. My understanding, speaking with the previous borough manager, is that a significant number of the recommendations were implemented, and financial savings were realized through implementing those recommendations. Just one other thing, Madam Vice President, you had earlier comments about fire service. If you looked at the recommendations, there are a few related to fire service. So if, as Andrew was mentioning, engaging in another phase, you can highlight fire service as an important area of concentration that you want to focus on implementing recommendations. And then we would provide grant funding, let's say, to do a comprehensive fire study, to look at career department, to look at regionalization consolidation, providing a wide range of options that council could then decide to implement. And it would be using highly technical data that is way more sophisticated than I'm able to understand. But the, whatever consulting firm you choose, as well as our internal technical advisor that we would provide to help in investigative part, would address those issues.
We've developed a very robust technical assistance for blight remediation, comprehensive blight planning, code enforcement best practices that we have felt, that we've helped fund in further phases of EIP. We've, we've helped purchase new financial software. Really, I mean, it can really run the gamut of the things that you guys would like to implement from the plan that you guys will work with your consultant to help develop.
Well, thank you for preparing this. I was not on council in 2009, but I was able to obtain a copy of the original report, and yes, it's rather cumbersome during some plaid year, specifically that I need to be working on.
The, the grant, just to also add, there's no specific window. We received an appropriation, obviously, from the legislature, and we recently did receive that now that our budget has been paid for. So we have funding until the funding runs out. So it's to your advantage to apply earlier, instead of waiting till maybe June, and then we're out of money, and then you have to wait until the next budget gets approved, whenever that gets approved, kind of thing. So it would be to the advantage of the borough to apply early. We, we're also able to offer technical assistance in your borough manager search that you potentially may embark on with the departure of a kind of borough manager.
Any other comments?
Jamar, as far as in-kind services, is that still also on the table?
Yes. I believe so.
You say that was.
I agree with what you said.
Possibly.
We're reducing the mess this 20%, but yeah, certainly, we could.
On the table for discussion.
Yeah, we can, we can look into it and get back to you.
I would suggest to council, if, if it is your desire to move forward with this, obviously, the concern is, where do you get the money to pay that 20% or what it might be? Remind you that you will most likely be without a borough manager. I would, I don't know your intent, but I would expect more than likely the first few months of next year. So you'll enjoy a savings on salary during that timeframe that could be diverted to help cover this loss.
And.
Could we pay our 20% out of the savings?
I'm sorry?
Could we pay our 20% later out of the savings?
Um.
Hey, if you don't ask, you don't get.
Payments, payments are made as invoices are submitted, and we reimburse invoices as soon as we get them. There's about four to six weeks turnaround at most.
Okay.
So as you send money out, we get it right back to you as soon as you get that invoice to us. One other thing I would add, because the borough has some difficult decisions to make going forward, this sort of technical plan gives you a leg to stand on to explain to your constituency why you need to make the difficult choices that you may or may not have to make, to shore up your financial future of the borough.
One thing with recommendation 72, being define and implement best management prac, best management practices for stormwater management is now a mandate that's coming to us from the state.
Yes, yes, it is.
To have not only the, the plan of stormwater management, but to have a different department created. So here we are saying, we're going to help you save, we're going to help you spend at the same time. Explain that, how that works.
We are here to help improve the efficiency and effectiveness of local governance. So as new mandates come in, we don't just say, hey, you go figure it out on your own. We're still here to help, and these sorts of plans can help you figure out where to cut and/or where to save so that you can implement whatever new regulations may or not be coming from Harrisburg or from Washington.
Because each entity that's a part of the stormwater management, like say, for example, West Upper and Lower, they each have their own government. They're each going to be required to have a separate leader for this, and yet we're distributing all the water to all of them. It just seems like an overreach of government. That's my opinion, but in the dollars amount, it would be fiscally more conservative to have one manager for all of the water, all of the people that are being supplied by the borough authority.
I'm still getting up to speed on stormwater management, but what I have learned so far is that it is totally separate from water and sewer.
I agree, and I understand that, and it relates to how waters are feeding back to the main body as far as pollution, et cetera. And again, I go back that all of these are draining back to the Skubal River, and their inlet source is also the Skubal River, and their KE for services is the borough authority of Pottstown, whether it's Lower West or Upper. Am I correct? I'm just saying. I just want to point that out, that it is an overreach.
Okay, if there's no further comment, we'll add this for Monday evening, and see if we want to go forward.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next, a presentation from the Culbordale Railroad about their land development. Nathaniel Guest?
All right. I'd like to introduce Nathaniel Guest of the Culbordale Railroad Preservation Trust, as well as Ken Pick from the Berks County Redevelopment Authority. The Redevelopment Authority, as you may know, owns the, the property that the Culbordale Railroad operates upon, and as you also probably know, that they have some plans, very exciting plans, to build a station adjacent to Memorial Park. And along with the station, there'll be some other site improvements, sidewalks, stairways, pathways, parking spaces, and that kind of thing, associated with this, with this project. We've sat down and reviewed the plans internally with staff, and we are recommending that they, they would have to go through land development due to the nature of the improvements that they are planning for this project. However, due to time constraints, we're recommending that the actual procedural requirements be reduced so that they can get this building constructed. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Nathaniel and Ken, and they can divulge the details to Council.
Thank you, Justin. Can you hear me okay? Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you. It's been some time since the last time I presented to you about the railroad and the station project, and luckily, I know in the ensuing time, many of you have actually come and ridden the railroad, perhaps for a first or second time. And if you haven't, I encourage you to do that, to please see our progress firsthand. The very first time I spoke to the, this august body was nearly four years ago, and as Steve Toroni reminded me, I had more hair back then. And it was about, really, a project, it was just a project in planning at that time to convert the Civil War-era railroad and linking us with Voyartown in Berks County into a regional tourism destination. I suspected at the time, and haven't been proven wrong, that it was, is, and probably will continue to be a Herculean task. During that time, I, when I first spoke to this group, I underscored the importance of a station in Pottstown, a terminus in Pottstown, where the tourist railroad passengers will become shoppers, visitors, hikers, bikers, so on and so forth, in affecting the community and economic development goals and benefits of the Culbordale Railroad project to the people of Pottstown. The railroad is generating about $2 to $3 million a year in economic impact, and much of that is being afforded to Voyartown because of the absence of a station in Pottstown. And because of that, consequently, our activity is primarily focused in Voyartown. DCED recognized the value of the station in Memorial Park, so thank you, DCED, affording the Culbordale Railroad a grant during the very first round of multimodal, multimodal projects, which is very exciting. And in fact, it is that grant that's really driving the timeline that we're working on. It's a significant grant. Designing the station has been an important task, and you've got packets before you, and you can see how that design has evolved and what we're offering. And if it's all right, I'd like to skip ahead to the slide that shows the elevation. This is what you will see from the park. I still have some fundraising to do, so I'm going to put a footnote to that, but, you know, I have naive confidence. So it, in the ensuing time from when I, we first got the grant, it's been a project of really evolving a design. And I think of all the things you might say about the design, it is highly evolved. And really, you've heard the expression, good, fast, or cheap. I think ultimately, we've gone for extraordinary, not just good. Pottstown's my home, and it's important to me that whatever we build here really reflect who we want to be and how we want to be perceived, and I think this building does that. So I think the elevation is most instructive, but you can also see, we've got in your, in your packet perhaps, the floor plans, and you can see what things are offered in that. This is the, the lower-level floor plan. There's also an upper-level floor plan that shows the, the main passenger area that has the bathrooms, perhaps the most important amenity for the tourist-going passenger, as well as flexible space, ticketing space, and what have you. Part of the challenge of the space is that, as you know, the railroad owns a sliver of land nearly nine miles long between Pottstown at milepost 0.0, all the way to milepost 8.6 in Voyartown. And it is, it has, if you were to look at the property description, it would be longer than the DCED grant application that we talked about. It would stand about this thick because there are strange parcels located all over the place. And sometimes that runs to our burden, and sometimes it runs to our benefit. The parcel in Montgomery, in Memorial Park is actually very, very thin and very, very narrow. And so in the designing of the building, one of the ways in which the design evolved was to reflect the fact that there, there are limitations there that we simply can't overcome. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ken Pick to talk about the site.
Thank you.
Oh, that's scary about that. Sorry, sorry.
Thank you. Yes, it became very apparent that this project was not going to fit inside the railroad right away. Some of it would spill into, or have to be built in Memorial Park. You can see, it's a little bit of the foundation, the walkway, the stairway, and then the walkway down into the, to the handicap parking spaces. So this was quite a challenge. How are we going to deal with this? What kind of mechanism can we, can we use to solve this problem? Actually, it was Justin's idea, that perhaps it would be a combination of a land swap for the majority of the improvements, and then work by others, work by the project on your park. The parcel that we're talking about, the land swap is about 6,059 square feet, 6,060 square feet. We have a, we'll offer you an equal amount of land to add to your park. There's some excess land further at, towards the, oh, okay, there you go. You can see the pink area, there's some land up there. We can offer you an equal amount of land as a swap. And to accomplish this, we, go ahead, Justin.
Yeah, so initially, when they brought this project to me, and they realized that they maybe needed a little more area for the footprint of the, of the building, I said, well, we may be able to work out an exchange here that's beneficial to everyone, because as you are aware, the Tri-County Trail Plan, and also the Montgomery County 2011 Primary Trail Network Plan calls for the Manitowny Trail to go along the, generally along the alignment of the railroad, or between the railroad and the Manitowny Creek, from the Skubal River Trail towards, towards the north and points beyond. We've also had discussions about how, how the intersection at Shoemaker Road and Route 100 is not very conducive to pedestrians, and the Tri-County Trail Study had, in essence, posed a partial solution to that project problem by taking a trail underneath Route 100 to get, to get to the north side and the Pottstown Shopping Center area. So what, when we started to look at this, what we saw was this green sliver of land up here that we're proposing that Culbordale conveys to the borough as a part of this swap, so that we could get the right-of-way and the land area needed in order to bring a, a trail all the way through Memorial Park and underneath Route, Route 100. The pink area that's shaded, that's the Culbordale Right-Away, and the green area is obviously Memorial Park. You can see that the Culbordale Right-Away pinches Memorial Park between their land and the Manitowny Creek, which, which would, you know, essentially not really allow us to get any sort of trail in that, in. sort of trail in that location. This area is also being surveyed as a part of the Tri-County Trail Study right now. The consultants next week will have a survey plan, and preliminary engineering plans for the trail alignment through this segment, at which point, we'll have more information to know exactly what area of land we would need from Culbordale to make this work out. So, we don't have all the details yet, but we have approximate equal portions of land that could be used, I think, to the benefit of both parties.
Just wanted to point out a couple of things from the slide. So, it's, making out the railroad right-of-way on the slide is not quite as easy as it probably is on the plans you have in front of you, but the majority, the vast majority of the building does sit on the railroad-owned ground, ground that the railroad currently owns, behind the blue line. Okay, behind the blue line. So, there's a small section of the building and some of the walkway that would go onto ground that's currently part of Memorial Park. If the, if we could proceed forward with this land swap to facilitate your creation of the trail and the building of this building, then the only things that would be on borough ground would be a portion of the walkway, and then the five handicapped parking spaces, five ADA parking spaces we would build in the park. So, part and parcel of the request for an expedited land development process is the fact that much of the building is actually on railroad ground, and therefore not subject to a land development process anyway. Did I miss any? Sure. So, construction needs to start in March of 2018, and conclude by December 31st at midnight of 2018. So, Santa himself might be slinging hammers up there next year, and we're very glad, in fact, that there is a deadline, because we want this building built for both for us and for Pottstown.
And I think for the borough's standpoint, I mean, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want, you know, we could lease some of the ground to the Culbordale Railroad, but we would essentially be leasing, you know, part of the building's foundation, and it just doesn't make any sense. It makes sense for this building to be on all one parcel. They have to compose a land development plan anyway, which we can incorporate a lot-line change into. So, I think it's the cleanest option that we're really presented with.
This swap, must it be of equal square footage, or equal market value, or above? I have an expert next to me.
I think we're talking about a land swap, and we're looking at what is equal market value, so to speak, of what we're trying to do. I think conceptually, they laid out what they like to do, but there are really three issues in front of council, and I think the biggest thing is whether you agree with the concept of what's being proposed. The three issues that we're looking at, one is essentially, do you favor or will you support a land swap, as been described, with the idea that the borough would give up a piece of land in the park in exchange for getting a piece of land that has equal value to the borough? And anytime you convey real estate, the borough code has requirements, so we would need to make sure that if you wanted to do that, we complied with those provisions. The second thing we'd have to do is obviously create a subdivision, since we're creating a parcel that now doesn't exist. So, there'd be a subdivision process, at least of borough land, creating a very unusual lot that frankly, wouldn't meet any of the zoning ordinance requirements, and we'd figure out a way to make sure we did that in a legal fashion, at the same time, meet the timeframes that the railroad has, if you support the concept. Along with the subdivision, then, they're asking for a waiver of the land development requirement. I understand they're not asking for a waiver of any of the substantive requirements, rather the process to facilitate a quick in-house review of all ordinances. So, all the ordinances would still apply, but the borough does have a process called an in-house or informal land development that has been done before for minor projects. So, this would typically be a project that would qualify for an in-house land development anyhow, if council agrees. So, those are the three components that I think would have to be undertaken in a short timeframe, but the first thing is that you have to embrace the concept of what's being proposed. So, again, given the timeframe we're talking about, I'd almost need some kind of vote conceptually Monday night to start the process, so we can identify all the issues and figure out how to do this, and still be compliant with state law and local ordinance.
Thank you.
Well, first, I was a little disappointed that we'd not be getting the Frank Furness Station, but however, this looks fantastic, for the mansard roofs and the height of the structure itself, too. It looks like it, from the top, the steeple's around 100 feet or so. So, that should be obviously very clearly visible from 100, and I assume from 422 as well, for all the people seeing something new built here. I'd be happy to help in any way.
It's the goal to make it visible from Route 100, and to be a part of the Pottstown skyline?
A piece of property that you want to exchange, I don't know if you mentioned it or not. Did you mention, like, what the square footage of it would be, or like, I'm sure it's not an acre or anything, but...
6,000 square feet.
And what's the square footage of the building, which I'm not going to do that, but...
It's roughly 4,000 square feet, I think, between two levels?
So, it's like 2,000 on each level?
It is not, it is a building that looks larger than it is.
Yeah. Well, I saw the building in Voyartown, so it'd be a little bit bigger, a bit bigger than that one.
Bigger than that, for sure.
Yes. Which is, that's a lovely building over there.
Thank you. The question was, are there budgetary constraints that could result in a building looking less than this? I keep being told I need to be realistic, although I hate that conversation. So, yes, it's possible that if we don't raise the funding, you know, you see a more scaled-back tower as one potential in this image, but obviously, the goal is to build the building on the right.
Any other questions?
Sorry, can you hear me, Bill? Because we're doing potentially a land swap, you know, we ran into that trouble with the, what is it, the pumping station in Memorial Park, and we ended up having to get, like, that's not going to be a problem, correct?
No, that's correct, because the actual, the land that we were assuming for the offset actually not only includes the footprint around the station, so the red area, but it actually goes all the way out to the parking area. We included that all as, you know, Culbordale use as a non-recreational use, because at the time, we didn't really know where the station was going to go, so we just assumed the greatest amount of land we can possibly think of at that time. So, it will be covered under that replacement that we're still obligated to. It doesn't change that in any way.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll list this for Monday evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, 13. The title is zoning 306 North Charlotte Street. Mr. Garner, would you explain our situation?
Sure. We received a, the zoning hearing board received an application for zoning relief for a property on 306 North Charlotte Street, and my suggestion is, if borough council is inclined to take a position or participate in the hearing, we have a discussion in executive session under the heading of litigation. The proposed use of this, in this is a group home, which I understand is permitted in this district by special exception, and a review of the application would seem to indicate that the applicant is able, or asserts they're able to meet the special exception criteria. So, that's what's before you.
Very good. 14 is Bethel Community Church.
So, wait, can I, we are going to discuss this in executive session?
In executive, yes. I'm recommending that, if you want to discuss it.
Yeah, definitely.
Bethel Community Church. You're here to talk about your tax abatement, or you're going to check on this issue?
Sure, I think council has received some information from Bethel Community Church with respect to the property located at 575 North Kime Street. Essentially, the church is asking for an abatement of accrued real estate tax from the borough, believe the approximate total is $16,000. Just for a little bit of background, this property had always been a religious use. It had been exempt from the tax rolls when it was owned by the prior owner. I understand from the Board of Assessment, when the church acquired the property, typically when a property transfers, it automatically comes back onto the tax rolls. The reason there was even a tax assessment was there was a question of whether or not an exempt application was timely filed. Since that time, I understand the church did file for tax-exempt relief. They were granted that relief by the Board of Assessment. So, we're looking at an interim period of about May of 2016 to the end of 2017, that it was on the tax rolls. Candidly, it probably shouldn't have been, because the use was the same use, religious use, from the prior owner to the current owner, and the church is asking that they be relieved from that interim tax obligation. And I hope I explained that correctly, but that is what happened here. So, they're asking you and the school district, obviously you can't speak for the school district, to not require them to pay the taxes during that interim time.
And Chuck, I understand that this amount is not, because it was a religious use, it had been anticipated to be taxed, and this amount is not included in our budget numbers.
That's correct. Again, this is really a dynamic that occurred based upon either the failure to or the untimely filing of a request for tax-exempt status, so the property, in theory, always would have been exempt but for that issue.
So, we'll list this for Monday evening. And 15, YWCA parking agreement. Mr. Flanders, you'll explain.
We have a letter of request from YWCA to renew their parking agreement with the borough under new terms. As council is aware, there is a parking committee currently investigating parking throughout the borough, and it's my understanding from the chief that most likely in January, at the latest February, the committee will be providing council with a report. With that in mind, I don't know that it would be wise to change your agreement with the YWCA or enter into a new agreement. So, I spoke with Stacy Woodland, who is the executive director at the YWCA, and suggested to her that rather than enter into a discussion about a new multi-year lease, perhaps it would make more sense to extend the existing agreement, which I believe you all received copies of in your packets, for a period of term until council determines how they are going to handle parking throughout the borough going forward. So, my recommendation would be that rather than even begin discussing a new agreement, simply give them an extension, whatever term council sees fit to do so, going into 2018.
Perhaps until the new report comes in.
Correct. Perhaps it would be smart to do it either quarterly or month-to-month.
Okay, here are no opposition, we'll list this for Monday evening. 16 is the chemical bids, and we only have...
I'm sorry, can we, my apologies, can we go to 15 in a minute? So, we're going to extend this, are we agreeing to extend it month-to-month or quarter, like...
Month-to-month, month-to-month, because the parking committee should be hopefully ready in January with a proposal that's going to resolve parking through borough-wide.
Right. I just want to be clear on that.
Okay, we'll see that the wording is month-to-month. And 16, the chemical bids, we only have four chemicals. We all have to print out the recommendations from Public Works. Any questions on this?
This will be through our utilities department.
Oh, utilities, okay. There are no issues, we'll list this for approval Monday evening. And now, into the year-end items. First being to adopt a budget for 2018. Last month, we started this with, am I giving you a little bit of history about the borough and their finances? And in the last eight years that I've been here, we've watched this borough become more lean, more efficient, more fiscally responsible through the efforts of our staff, our manager, our finance director, and that. We went from no bond rating to a double A. We paid off finances with exorbitant interest rates, they're gone. We joined with others to be able to purchase our supplies at a lower cost. Our departments have become more streamlined, not that they can't improve in the future. There were some personnel reductions, some shifting of personnel, and through the efforts of this council, we brought the residents three years of zero-tax increase. We were well on our way trying to do that again this year, until we were hit with quite a tragedy. I don't know how many hundreds of assessment appeals went to Norristown, whereby the assessments were lowered, but it's an exorbitant amount, at the cost of losing $31 million in revenue. To support this condition that we're in, there was an article in yesterday's Mercury, even talking about the cost of our police department. And through the efforts of our boys in blue, and women in blue, and the best efforts they've made, we've watched crime go down significantly, especially in your ward, Mr. Poskell, and others. And it seems the general opinion that even though the cost is very, very high and a major portion of this year's budget, the people out there like and want to maintain our police department. You heard earlier from our fire departments, and they're doing a whole lot with very little. We're at a point that there's, we got all the low-hanging fruit. We trimmed as much fat as we could to run as lean as possible. And there's not much to take away unless there's a huge demand to cut services, and that would mean we'd take more policemen off the street, we'd cut back on fire protection services, we might go into the office operations here in this building and reduce attendance and service at the windows, so if you want to pay your bills, we'll only be open Tuesday for that. If you want to go to codes or licensing and get a permit, we'll do that on Thursday. If you at home have a sewage backup, you can call in, they accept calls on Friday. We're that close right now. I commend the council, and I commend the staff for all that we've done in the last eight years, but we're up against a wall of lowered assessments. So, thank you, Mr. Hilton, for explaining further our situation here, and...
We, Dennis and I, have recommendations that we would like to make.
Good.
We do believe that we can cut this down much further.
Good.
So, do we have to vote, to, you know, do anything to start this discussion, other than your beginnings here?
Well, have your ideas been submitted?
Can I just, right, can I just make one, I have one general comment. I follow Evan Brandt on Twitter and his blog, and what I noticed at the end of the year, he's posting all these meetings where the business manager is making their presentations on the budget, proposed budget, and I don't recall us having a budget presentation as a council at the end of the year. So, that was just something that I thought was worthy to note. And just to make it clear, I guess, when was that? Last month, we said we're going to try to cap this at an 18.61 increase, correct? That was, that was the motion that was made, we're not going to exceed that, with the hope that we were going to decrease that, so it would go down. And this budget that we're, that's proposed to be adopted... And this budget that we're, that's proposed to be adopted is still at the 18.61 increase, percent increase. So clearly, we have more work to do. Go ahead.
I think, I think that one thing I'll agree with you on is we have to determine what the residents, what's important to the residents of the borough of Pottstown. Our police services, our fire services, our safety protection is important to the residents of the borough of Pottstown. There are some other things that we can do without that, that as a taxpayer, I'm sure that we can do about, we need feet on the street. We need people on the street, not so much people in offices. So I have some recommendations that I'd like to make that will help. And if we look at DCED's recommendations from 2009, you'll see that some of them are in here. It was very important to bring on some, we've got to close the fire gap. Some of the things that even are in these recommendations, we need to do and we have just begun doing. For example, the fire inspections of the retail, commercial, industrial properties have to be done annually. That's, that's by regulation. That's by NFPA regulation. They had not been being done annually previously. They now are starting to be done annually. I think we need to close the fire gap, and I also think we need to push a little more money into that fire tax to get these guys that are responsible for $1 million worth of equipment a raise. It is absurd that they are making $11.50, $10, and $12 an hour. So if we can agree to the things that we support, we can start knocking off some of the things that we can agree that we can do without. So let's start there. How many people agree on that, the police and the fire?
Absolutely.
Right. So where are you suggesting the council?
All right. No Public Works Assistance Director. That was $170,000 that was put into the budget. I don't think there's a need to fill that position now. It doesn't exist. We still have a Public Works Director. Recommendation by DCED is to actually put the public, the utilities and the Public Works together as one. So right now, I'm just recommending the Assistant Public Works Director, $170,000 a year. Eliminate the Assistant Borough Manager position. Justin, you're still here. I'm only suggesting that once we have a Borough Manager in place, that we do not fill, backfill an Assistant Borough Manager position. Eliminate one position in Human Resources. The recommendation by DCED is to have the Borough Manager be the Director of Human Resources. Limit the service, the walk-in service to Finance and Public Works. That eliminates one admin in each one of those departments. You may want to do that in codes as well and eliminate of an admin position in there. Reduce the Grants Administration position to part-time or three-quarter time, whatever is paid by, in full by part. That position, I was my understanding, that is mostly responsible for the record-keeping of the transportation. Part pays for that portion, part can pay for that entire proportion. That would eliminate the, that would eliminate the insurance and all the benefits that go along with that. Eliminate our contributions to paid and to the Human Relations Commission. So let's go down then one by one and see what we can agree on because we're going to have to vote on these separately. I would think that we need to know who's going to support what.
If I, if I could just make an observation to remind council, while I understand you want to look to places to save money, which is what you're supposed to do, under your Borough Manager's ordinance, the Borough Manager controls the workplace and controls the personnel, so determines who is, who is here and who shouldn't be here. Except for the Assistant Borough Manager and the Borough Manager, council has abdicated by ordinance the authority to arrange and direct the workplace to the Borough Manager. So if you can direct what services you'd like to see cut, then the Borough Manager can undertake to see what happens in order to accomplish what you want to do. But as far as the personnel, unfortunately, council isn't in control of the personnel, the Borough Manager is.
Okay. What we are in control of, I am not going to vote myself $161 a year tax increase. So, so let's do it by, let's do it by services. We want to cut, we want to cut some, some services in Human Resources. We want to cut some services in Finance. We want to cut some services in Public Works. We want to cut some services in Grants Administration. We want to cut some services in Licensing Inspection. Can we all agree to those cuts in services?
Not until we see the numbers.
I think I would like to say, you say, we want to go.
That's why I'm...
I have no idea, no. And I don't want to go that way. We should check it out, everything together as a council and decide what we'll do to set a nine this meeting and then later do the presentation.
We can't, we have to, we, that's why I'm saying, I'm asking now what we as a council agree to. We have two meetings left before this budget is adopted. Otherwise, we have to schedule special public meetings. So we have to work this out now or Monday. That's it. That's, that's our options.
Well, no, we have till the end of the year and we can have additional meetings.
But we don't. We don't have the special meetings because last year, I said, we need to have a special meeting for this budget, and we didn't. We just went, went through the motions and just did it. So we don't do it. We don't do what's asked. We were asked all to come with individual recommendations for, for what we could eliminate, and I didn't hear that from you. I didn't hear what you, what your cost savings were. So we, we all need to, our feet are to the fire. We need to figure this out. And Cheryl is trying to figure it out now.
Right. Well, she's made her suggestions and we need to know what, how much that'll save us.
I've made these suggestions for three months.
Correct.
Right. Well...
And you've had since July, the administration has since, had since July to figure it out, and they haven't figured it out. So now we need to figure it out.
Then we can charge them with that for Monday evening and find out what that is.
So is the Borough Manager will come back with a change in millage with these suggestions as a comparative? Is that possible?
Yeah, we'll, we'll need a line item, savings for each one.
So it's, if I may.
Sure.
So it's, it's easy to say, cut HR services, cut Finance Services, cut Licensing Inspection Services. At the end of the day, what services do you want to cut? For instance, Public Works, do you want to cut snow plowing or snow removal out of the borough budget? Finance, do you want to cut, I don't know, collecting payments that come through the window?
I think I gave this to you, the walk-in, the walk-in customers service, the walk-in customer service. I gave you exactly what I'm saying that you could cut. That's the service that I'm recommending.
With that, that is not something that can happen instantly. We can't throw the switch and on January 1st, say, there will be no more customer service at the windows. This is, this is why you have heard me ad nauseam in this forum personally and in Finance meetings, saying, tell me what services. What services are you willing to tell the taxpayers of Pottstown they can, they are no longer going to get? And the examples I used are examples of services. To say generically, cut, cut HR services, what services do you want to cut?
How about the Borough Manager take responsibility of the Human Resources Director position?
So the Borough Manager was never responsible, the Assistant Borough Manager was, and it was discovered that neither the Borough Manager nor the Assistant Manager has the legal background or the training to deal with the intrinsic issues of Human Resources, the liability issues, nor does the Borough Manager or the Assistant Borough Manager have the time to deal with HIPAA issues. So the decision was made to create a department to manage Human Resources, which is professionally what a Human Resources Manager does. If you want a Borough Manager who is a Human Resources Director, you need to hire one that's trained and certified.
I agree. Maybe we should look into that in our replacement of a Borough Manager.
So what more do you need to give us across the fact?
I need to know what services you are willing to do without. And from that, once you tell me what services you are willing to eliminate, to do without, we will figure out how to make that happen and tell you what savings, if any, are going to be afforded through cutting those services out.
That's what I said. We just have to figure it out and figure out the numbers and the decision. I don't think it's a real decision today. We have to talk about it, get together, put numbers together, and then decide.
Walk-in customer service to the residents to Public Works, Finance, and Licensing Inspection. Is everybody, anybody in agreement to those services that we could do without?
So we're saying no window service in Borough Hall?
Well, maybe it doesn't have to be five days a week.
Depends on how much it's going to cost us, I suppose. Or save us.
And are you willing, you have to take into consideration, let's use, I'll use Licensing Inspections for a moment. Are you willing to accept the fact that people that are coming to get permits, people that are coming to get plans reviewed, developers that are engaging in projects and prepared to deal with the fact that they won't be able, they will not be able to get the things they need in the timely fashion they need, and therefore economic development will most likely be stifled through that process? Those are the ancillary problems.
Is it your assertion that other municipalities, all municipalities have walk-in service?
I don't know what all other municipalities do, so I would never assert that without the knowledge.
I, I think my concern with, I mean, I see where you're coming from, Cheryl. My concern is this. I already pay too much in taxes, so for the borough to say, oh, no, you can't come in here and there's no window service, so what am I paying for then? You know, that's my concern.
Well, maybe not cut it out five days a week, but maybe we can eliminate one position, one administration position for each department. So you're open from four to, or one to four, rather than 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM?
I think the general feeling I'm getting is that you and I are trying to make cuts and I don't know that we're getting any buy-in.
Well, somebody better buy in because we're not going to vote for an 18% tax increase.
We can make it, but we have to communicate in a legitimate way, not just like that.
I think, I'll repeat, the question on the floor is, what service do you want to cut? What should we stop doing?
The only one that'll really make a significant impact is Police Department. Like, I'm not in favor of that.
I disagree. We could cut out a half a million dollars in personnel costs without ever touching the police or the fire department, at least a half a million dollars.
By closing all the windows? Or what?
One of the other things you just said...
Say, we don't have the numbers yet. You know, you suggested we cut back.
Why suggest you get the numbers? Because these are not new suggestions. These are things that I've been asking for for months and months and months and months. And you've had months to put together those numbers.
If we do this on Monday, we can send all the information and make a decision by the week.
Well, if you tell Mr. Flanders what service you suggest he cut, he can have Finance decide, or compute how much that will save us. Correct?
Specifically, yes, but keep in mind those numbers are going, and I'll use the numbers that Mr. Wagner provided you earlier, six, most of those positions, with the exception of Licensing and Inspections, six, somewhere between 50 and 65% of the salaries are covered through the Florida. So the impact on the general fund is going to be minimal. If you recall, early on in this process, I said, in order to affect a major savings in the general fund, it would be 33 civilian positions or 17 police officers or some combination thereof. And that would be to balance the budget without a tax increase based on the current numbers. So by simply closing the window and eliminating positions, single positions within those departments, you are not even going to come close to affecting the savings you're trying to affect. In the Licensing and Inspections arena, keep in mind that Licensing and Inspections is revenue neutral. So the employees there are, although they're funded from the general fund, you have to look at the revenue side.
Eighty-nine percent.
The Licensing and Inspection Department is majorly funded by the fees that we collect. If you eliminate positions, the revenue side goes down. So again, we have a catch point to, but nonetheless. That's it.
Okay. So from that list, any more definition?
I'm not sure what services you're looking to cut, except for the fact that I heard Council Miller correct, she wants to know what savings we would affect by limiting hours at each of our walk-up windows. We will have a number.
That's not the only one. Additionally, your, you have three very talented grant writers and seekers in this borough, Justin Keller, Michael Lenhart, and the circuit writer, Michael Lane. If between the three of them, they cannot seek out, write, and administer grants, I think that we have some problems. So again, you, since that position is being paid mostly by part, I'm saying to you, let the position, the part of the position that's being paid by part continue to be paid by part, but cut that position back to a three-quarter or half time, whatever that funding is that you're getting from part. And that eliminates, that eliminates from the borough the cost of insurance and, and, you know, like holiday pay and all the, the benefits, other incentives and benefits.
So therein lies the rub. What services? What services are you looking to, to...
I'm not sure why you're having difficulty with this, Mr. Flanders. It is your job as the Borough Manager to be, to make personnel, to make personnel streamline cuts.
So we have, we have streamlined, we have cut, we have worked diligently over the past years. You recall the budgets over the past years have come in less than the previous year. Unfortunately, this year it didn't work out that way because of, as Mr. Wain described earlier, some issues that have occurred with our finances that we didn't anticipate.
And meantime, personnel costs have risen.
Nonetheless, the, you are correct. I, I quite well know my job, and I would suggest to you that council's job is to tell me what services, not what employees. And I will figure out from those service cuts how to make it happen with personnel.
Well, those services, services in those departments. You think you can handle that much by Monday?
Mr. Wain, I think that this is your turn.
Okay. So I'm going to ask you to calculate the savings by closing the windows.
Okay.
Removing the Assistant for Public Works.
Eliminating an Assistant Borough Manager position.
Assistant Borough Manager position.
Grants Administration.
Sorry?
Grants. Let's cut something from grants if you don't like the, the term of a specific person.
What would be the savings if you eliminated the Grants Administrator? Or just reduced it to what's paid by part? And then we're going to, what is it you would like the others to not do when they're covering for that part of the Grants Administrator that's not there? If you're going to, if you're going to put the workload on, on the Assistant Borough Manager or...
Do you want to cut what grants specifically you want to cut? Do you want to cut part? Do you want to cut...
See, I don't think it's about cutting grants. I think it's about taking, but it's about taking on more responsibility. This is what happens. Any workplace, what, we decide we're going to start cutting positions or personnel, other people pick up the slack. They don't want to pick up the slack, they go find some, work somewhere else. That, that's where I'm at.
It's, it's, it's obvious to me that, that, I mean, everybody knows that the way we're going now is just, is just not sustainable, just can't keep going the way we're going now, mainly because our income reduces every single year. Okay? I don't know what's the number, 3 million we lost this year? 3 million? Something like that? I don't know. It reduces every year? Are, are we losing revenue?
Our assessed valuation.
We did not lose $3 million.
What is it? Do you know the number? Are we losing, tend to lose every year because of assessments?
It's around $100,000 for the assessments each year.
Okay. So we're losing income every single year, whether, whatever it is, $100,000, still a lot of money. We're losing every single year. Okay?
Right.
So that's, over time, that's unsustainable. So just like you do in your home, you have to find the places where you can cut. We've all said that we can't cut, we can't cut any more places. This department can't cut anymore, they can't anymore. When you get to that point, I hate to say, but we have to... When you get to that point, I hate to say, but we have to look at staff. I mean, I hate to, we have to look at staff. Now, I'm not saying that it has to be done now. Obviously, you can't sit here, put people on the spot and try to make them answer right now.
Right.
Okay? But, wait a minute, let's just say over the next, you know, first quarter or so, you know, I hate to throw committees at problems, but, you know, let's sit down and do a feasibility. You know, we, there's more people here, we can do ourselves without going out and paying someone to do it. Let's put something together and look at our staff and see where we can cut. And just like you said, it's just a matter of people picking up the slack. We have to cut services. We can cut staff and wherever, you know, things are missing, people fill in the gap. That's what we do, that's what we all do at our jobs. People get fired and we fill in the gap. That's what we do at our jobs. So, so it's not making any, any leeway here, putting people on the spot and making them answer right now. That's not, that's not solving anything. You know?
But if there's an area you have in mind that you think could be cut back, whatever service that might be, tell us now and we'll have.
No, no, we're not, we can't go that way. We can't, we can't do that discussion right now. This service get cut, that service get cut. That's putting people on the spot and we can't do that right now. I'm saying, over the next couple of months, maybe the first quarter next year, let's put something together, we can do a feasibility and decide.
Well, that sounds reasonable.
And look at it, look at it strategically, line by line, and see where, where we can cut staff.
That sounds reasonable.
And where, and where that staff can fill in. So it's planned, it's not done hector scector, or whatever.
Are you saying, Mr. Wynn, that we have time until December 31st?
Yes.
Okay. Even if we have to come here to have an F R meeting, we'll do it.
I mean, I basically agree what the other councillors are saying, those two councillors are saying, but it can't be done now.
Well, it has to be done before the end of the year, Joe, because this is what, this is the budget that we're facing now. And, and again, and I, and I hate to put it back on to management, but these are the same things that I've been saying for at least three months. There's no reason that this feasibility study could not have been undertaken in the last three months.
Well, you know what? It's not, it's not done.
It's not done.
So it's not done.
It's not done.
So we can just banter back and forth?
No, but what I'm saying is, I'm not gonna, we can't adopt an 18% tax increase. So whatever we figure out has to be done before December 31st. So I'm not saying it has to be done right now at the second, but it has to be done before December 31st.
That's true.
What is the total, what is the percentage of all employees? Thirty-three, is it what percentage? Is it 50%? Is it 25%?
Sandy, what's our total staff counting?
One hundred and thirty-five.
One hundred and thirty-five?
I do think something that we can probably try to agree on is that eliminating those donations or whatever you wanna say, payments we make to different organizations, like pay the senior center, I don't know, I rattled off a list of them at a meeting a while ago.
Yeah, look at those as well. I mean, like, it comes to maybe, what would you say, dollars? Maybe a little under $50,000 altogether, which is significant to me if that's something that you wanna go, I support that. Sure?
It's more than $50,000.
I don't remember the, I'm gonna be honest, I don't remember.
It's 45,000 for paid, 20,000 for paid, 25,000 economic development, 7,000 we give in relations commission, 3,000 to the senior center.
I go half for paid.
Do you have those? Okay, and you can have these figures to us before Monday? Okay? I guess there's no reason to do part two. None at this point.
I think both of those were just listed because you contemplate action Monday night in some fashion in the budget and the tax ordinance, or you're gonna have another meeting before the end of the year.
Yes. And an amendment fee resolution.
Is there a goal number? Are you working towards a goal?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to get closer to a goal of no more than 8% of a tax increase.
D is the 2018 council meeting schedule was published and sent to you. I guess it'll be reviewed again and get up again. Right? Board vacancies, construction co, board of appeals. Do you have any?
No, we do not.
Do not. Human relations commission, there's one vacant term to expire, 1-9 in '21.
To make things easier, Mr. Wynn, I recommend that B and C be moved to January.
Okay. So we'll move B and C to January. And then, under 19, the board vacancies, applied property review committee, there's four one-year terms to expire December 31, 2017. And as far as I know, all four have applied to be reappointed.
Correct.
Okay?
These have all been advertised, Mr. Wynn, and they're all, the ones you're on now are also.
Okay. Planning commission, one four-year term to expire in February. Pottstown Borough Authority, one five-year term to expire January 1, 2018. Carol Thomas, Tom Carroll has come forward on that. Vacancy board, one, one-year term to expire December 31, 2017. Any applicants for more? Vacancy? Two for that. Okay. E is zoning hearing board, one three-year term and alternate to expire January 1, 2018. And we have two names for that. Okay. 20 is Harb administratively approved, the documents are in your pack, 111 King Street and 131 King Street. All right. And now, your time for comments from our citizens that are present. And there is a time limitation of three minutes per person?
I just wanted to take a minute real quick to remind everybody about the weekend events that are going on for the holidays, starting December 8th and ending on the 10th. We have Santa coming, we have cookie decorating and all kinds of things that are in the brochure, they're on our website, downtownpottstown.org. I also wanted to take a minute and thank a few people that really pulled through for me this year with the holiday decorations. If you've noticed, we have some three-dimensional reindeer. They were done by the school district, the high school construction crew. We are hoping that we will gain more of them so that in Smith Family Plaza, we'll have more next year. The two-dimensional ones were done by Art Fusion and Advantage Insurance, they cut those out for me. And we had a lot of people out helping out to get the planners to no longer become trashbins, but to have decorations in them. And Ringingdale Christmas Tree Farm donated all of the greens for that. We had just a whole lot of people, Junior O T C came out, the Community Action Group, Individuals, Lisa Haberly from Operation Backpack brought a crowd in to help out. And one person that I really wanna end with is a gentleman called Hoagie, is what I know him as. He has been raking all the leaves in our downtown and he just does it because he loves the community. And if you've had ever time to meet him, you will see him pushing his cart and filling his bag, he does it all the time. And he's just a really great guy and I hope that if anybody sees him on the street, that you thank him for what he's doing because the downtown is looking really good and it's definitely because of what he's doing. So, thank you.
Next.
So next is April Borcassi, she had to leave for another engagement. And Kevin Yurder, I see you're signed up here. That's the exception.
You're now at councillor's general discussion. And tonight, I wanna start with councillor Paez, do you wanna tell us about the mural?
Yes, I invite everybody to come on Saturday, 10 o'clock, Saturday night, September 9th at 10 o'clock, to the dedication of the new mural down in Beach Street, 628 Beach Street. Welcome, everybody. And thank you to the borough and the council for that beautiful day, allow us to do it.
Great. Councillor Kirk.
I believe this is the last meeting with the cameras with, you know, councillor Miller and Flanders and America.
It happens.
I just wanted to say, you know, thank you very much for your service. It was an honor working with all you. You know, I hope to continue working with you, you know, in the future. I feel that you all have, have shown a great dedication to the people of this town and to your work and that's very commendable. And I just, I just wanted to say, you know, just thank you very much for your service.
Councillor Arms.
Yeah, I just echo the same thing as Joe. Cheryl, I miss shooting daggers at you from over here. I mean, we got along fine, I'm glad we, we didn't, we weren't always on the same page. Mark and Mayor Thomas, it was nice working with you guys too. I hope you enjoy your time off, that's for sure.
Councillor Miller.
I never thought I'd say that I'm gonna miss the daggers, councillor Arms, but I believe that I am. I, just being this, being one of the last council meetings, I just want to say a couple things. One, Mr. Flanders, there was no misperception in the memo sent to the fire companies, I have a copy of that memo. So I just wanna say to council, because, you know, as I pursue other things, and you guys are gonna be in charge and you're gonna be, please pay attention to what's going on, because there are seven councillors. And at no time should one councillor, being no matter what position they are in, be dictating anything, any decisions for the entire council without reviewing that with council to get a vote on. I wanna give a very special thanks to three borough businesses that are helping me get Pottstown Paul's off the ground. Not just because they're passionate about Pottstown and helping small businesses succeed, but also because, because they believe in a cause greater than themselves. So I wanna say thank you to Charlie Pierce of the Trophy and Plaque Shack, Ed Wysock of Advantage Insurance, and Gus Tellis of PCTV. I'd also like to recognize Complete Graphics for taking care of all my professional printing and design needs at a very reasonable price with excellent customer-friendly service. So I wanna tell everyone to please check out these businesses, they are local, see what they have to offer. The three of them are right along High Street. Breena, I'm sorry, I can't go to your dedication at 10 a.m. on Saturday because I'll be Santa downtown taking pet photos, but if everybody watches the November borough buzz, it opens up in front of the mural on Beach Street and it is absolutely beautiful.
Councillor Culp.
I wanna wish Sharon and Cheryl good luck in their new endeavors, whatever they may be. And we're gonna miss ya. And good luck to Mr. Flanders down in Delaware, huh?
Well, I'm hoping I hear some, yeah, from my constituents about their thoughts about the budget. It's, I don't get as many, you know, finishing up my first term, as many complaints as I thought I would given the situation, I guess, in the first board. So it's, especially now, I'm hoping I'm hearing people's thoughts on that. Yeah, my thoughts and prayers to the family that displaced, displaced the fire. And I hope, I'm glad that the fire department was there and took care of it very quickly and effectively. And, yeah, thank you to Cheryl, Madam Mayor, Mr. Flanders, it's been educational for the last four years. Thank you.
Very good. Mayor Thomas.
That was a good segue remark about educational. I will be continuing to other things, but not far from the community at heart, where there are still a lot of esoteric grassroots needs that have been a major focal point of this term. And as I mentioned earlier, the one with cameras in the classroom is really going to be a big one because of, you know, the growing incidences that relate around bullying and other issues that are becoming, in some instances, potentially unsafe. Not saying that they're exclusively unsafe, but you have to be able to put a safeguard in once a flag goes up. And a serious flag has been presented to me and that will be some of the onus of the beginning of the time off. And I'd just like to thank the police department because there's a lot that is going on now with the opioid crisis that kinda is turning them into somewhat medical personnel in the application of Narcan, even though there's assistance, of course, through the ambulance services who are usually the first ones there. And is that correct? Usually the police are the first ones there. And I've had many reports of the lives that were saved, but it's a growing challenge. It's a growing challenge, not only in this town, borough, region, but all across the United States of America. And I'd just like to thank you because you are intervening in so many social service areas where there's so much risk, especially in the area of domestic violence. And also with the growing impulsivity of our communities with the influx of people with very different needs, very different perspectives on how you should live, and that's also a part of your management when you go out to answer what you may seem to interpret as a simple call when you receive it and get there and find out that it's multi-dimensional types of things that are going on. Often that requires two or three cars and backup. You know, in the beginning, I didn't understand that, but today I understand it very intrinsically. So in having that, what do they call this position, a political subdivision, has allowed me to have many ride-alongs and to get to know some of you personally, not all of you, you know, but to know that cohesively, that you work as a unit, under good leadership. And of course, my prayers will stay with you because it's everybody's safety that you're concerned for and your safety as well is inclusive. I'd just like to address Mr. Flanders as working with him both as the police chief and as the borough manager. The difficult task of making the calls on the different budgets and I do remember one is specifically challenged budget, budget decision where there was a fiscal decision and I had to break a tie and that tiebreaker went against some people's better intentions at heart, but it was in regards to which was the most fiscal conservative decision. And under intense heat, that decision was made. So as you begin and continue to scale down the budget, you have a lot to look back on in remembrances of how it happened in different seasons. And now we have the, the reality of the, those who have went to challenge their assessments. So I trust that, you know, the information we're given is the information that's accurate in all the numbers. You know, these, these numbers are not often something that's at the purview of addition, which is why I asked about the actuarial assumptions that were given when this study was done in 2007. My interpretation of this type of study was that it was seeing in a projected manner the numerical status of the finances, but it was just taking what already existed and putting it into another geographic, not an evaluative type of decision. So, you know, we can look through this and see what was done and what wasn't done, but ultimately it's going to be year by year. And will there become a point where there will be some type of engagement with higher government as far as what's managing housing? We can't say that. But there are tools out there to help in those particular dire conditions and situations. Thank you, Cheryl, for all of your pet enthusiasm. It hasn't rubbed off completely, but thanks for the energy. And, thank you.
Thank you. Well, to those who will not be joining us. To those who will not be joining us next year, I really wish you well. I wish the three of you to have phenomenal futures. And don't forget us, come back. Give us suggestions, anything, everything. We will be closing this meeting for going into executive session. As our solicitor mentioned, one issue is potential litigation and the other's personnel. Meeting adjourned.